Okay, we'll call our meeting to order and we will start off with a moment of silence. Thank you, and special thoughts for Neil's mom tonight. She broke her it yesterday, had surgery today, so. And let's stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Crowe.
Here.
Mr. Gray.
Here.
Mrs. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Coppel.
Yes.
Mr. Logst.
Here.
Okay, approval of, uh, next on agenda is approve our previous meeting minutes. We all received them electronically. Anybody like to make a motion to accept them as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Logst.
Yes.
Mr. Coppel.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Crowe.
Yes. Next, we have approval of our operational reports. We got stuff from building inspector, from finance, from fire, from our police, from public works, from our water, wastewater, treasurer, monthly reports for August 2022. If there's no questions, or if there are questions at this time, we can present those or make a motion to accept them as presented.
I'll make a motion that we accept the reports as presented.
Okay, second.
Can I just comment on, I just want to comment on, um, one of, one of the police items that they had the, the youth, um, the youth program is, and how nice it is to incorporate
Yes.
young people and so that they can see what kind of, um, career that might be. And, and sometimes I think we forget, um, to encourage young people to stay in the community by seeing what we have here to, to offer. So I just want to say that that was a nice program and it looked like it ran really well, so hopefully that will expand in the future.
And the supervisor notation we got, is that, is that an agenda item or is that?
No, it's just, just to note to council.
And probably wouldn't be a bad idea to mention that at this point in time. That he, the special recognition to, uh, school resource officer Dave Rose. Presented an idea about having an academy during the summer for high school students, and they did that this summer, and it went really well, so. So we had, did somebody made a motion and we had a second, so let's, uh, call the roll, please.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Logst.
Yes.
Mr. Coppel.
Yes.
Mr. Crowe.
Yes. At this time Neil will present us the management report.
Yes, good evening council. Uh, just a few items this week on the management report, uh, first being the garbage pickup reminder. Uh, containers have started to arrive in the city. Uh, there's going to be about four thousand containers that'll be, uh, arriving to our new recycling facility area, put housing in there. Uh, one's a ninety-six gallon container for garbage and the other's a ninety-six gallon container for, uh, recyclables. Uh, those are going to be issued. We spoke with Tri-County today. They're going to be issued next week. Uh, it'll be a process that we believe will be done by October first. Um, and so they'll be delivering them. As I said, there's barcodes on each of these containers. Um, as they'll be linked to the address, obviously where they're delivered to. Uh, there's going to be obviously some training involved with this as, uh, we're putting together a letter, uh, some pictures of how the cans need to be set up in front of the homes. Obviously, this is new for the city, uh, as I'm not sure if they've ever done, uh, a pickup where everybody's had containers in, in the arm or the, the garbage truck picking up the, the containers. So, uh, there'll be some training obviously, as I said, involved, uh, showing folks how this container's going to be set up, um, as well. We had opportunity today to go out on some of these alleys. Uh, some of the issues we're having is, um, some of the folks in the alleys, the trucks, it's narrow in a lot of these alleys. So a lot of these folks that live on the alley, some of their furniture is actually on a main street, uh, Perry Street, uh, Main Street, things like that. So, uh, we're going to be working with those folks to let them know to transfer their, switch it for their garbage out on the main road to make it easier for the garbage company. Obviously, that'll be a learning process as well, bless you. But some in the alley obviously don't have any other means to put it, has to be on the alley. So, we're working on that list as well. Uh, Tri-County's actually reached out to us and asked if we're interested in selling our old dumpsters that we had purchased through Raccoon. Uh, so we're hoping to get something out of those as they like to switch, uh, obviously dumpsters that we want to purchase. Uh, so again, uh, I do want to encourage folks, they need to put their garbage out tonight before. Uh, we're getting a lot of folks calling in and they're waiting until the morning. They get up at six in the morning. The garbage already went through. Uh, they're starting at midnight. It's something obviously we're used to as, as Raccoon, sometimes would start till late in the morning. Uh, so again, just folks need to put their garbage out midnight the night before, even a couple hours before that is fine, of course, um, so they don't get missed. Uh, again, we'll be putting that, reiterating that in the letter. That's going to go out to all our customers. We're hoping to, to get that letter out this week. Uh, so folks are aware the containers are arriving and what they need to do with that, so. Again, we'll be posting on our city website, uh, try to get something in the newspaper as well. Of course, if folks have questions, they can call city hall.
Tri-County's dropping off the, 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 everybody's house or somebody.
They'll be starting on, on Monday.
Yes.
Yep.
And so they'll just be leaving them when people aren't home or?
Well, they're going to be delivering them and we, we talked about having some kind of insert we could put in the door of folks' at some of the homes. I think a letter's probably going to be the easiest. Uh, we're going to try to get that letter out beforehand. Hopefully people just don't get their mailay thrown out.
Right.
Obviously, uh, it's not going to be a water bill. It's going to be a separate letter that states instructions on what they need to do.
So you don't have to be home. They're just going to leave them.
They're just going to leave them. They're going to scan the barcode. They'll be there. Our job, our goal is to get the letter out obviously before Monday, which we'll get it out. Just hopefully people will mail. And obviously, we're going to post on social media and then next alert, um, we'll do our best to get the word out.
Put it in a little like a controversial post on Facebook. It'll spread.
Maybe. Uh, next up, Perry Street Bridge. Uh, today was the last walkthrough. Uh, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, but Heather went to the final walkthrough phase of South Perry Street. They were finished down there. Uh, they got barricades in place, signage is up. Uh, obviously, the bridge is gone. They cleaned it grass. Uh, Heather, I don't know if you have anything to add. I think everything is done. We did have a.
There was a barricade. There are now a lot of orange fencing that, or was?
It got the.
They said by the end of today that it would be there.
What's it going to be? Just cement barriers?
It's going to be like a.
They didn't say.
There's cement barricades there now. Uh, those have been there. Obviously, they've cleaned up around it. Um, it is an eye sort of look at.
I know.
It's got to be something better. Certainly, we know all folks do.
I wish we had some sort of, you know, barrels full of, plastic barrels full of water or something to slow somebody down so we didn't have another death in some happens, you know?
Sure. And, you know, I think there's some.
Whatever, what if they were going to take the, remove those big cement barriers, so it was going to go in front of the sign.
Good.
So, yeah. So they, obviously, a great job. They have it down in a matter of like two weeks. Uh, so, yeah, um, so that was completed today.
And we had some, you, most of you weren't here for the CDVG thing, uh, discussion ahead of time, but there's a lot of very good, robust conversation about South Perry Street and the fact that, you know, it, now that it's gone, there's a lot of people that wish that we could replace it with something, even a single language. And I said, you know what? If somebody has an idea, comes up with an idea that will work, fire away.
And of course, our 2022 CDVG, we allocated about eighteen thousand dollars for a study, obviously, for the next step for that location. That'll be starting. Uh, next, Church Run follow-up meeting. Uh, had a great meeting last week with county planning, local, and local engineers, city officials. Uh, Sam was there as well to discuss Church Run options, uh, plans moving forward with that. Obviously, it's a long-term solution for Church Run. We've been talking about it obviously for a while. Uh, we're in the process of putting out an RFP, um, in the newspaper, request for proposals. That's going to be ready by the end of this week. It'll be in the newspaper hopefully the beginning of next week as long as, as we're happy with the language. That'll run for about a month. Uh, I have a firm selected by November. Uh, basically, what they're going to do is they're going to be, and want to have access to the, to the large blocks. We have in our office, have studies that have been done for years. Uh, studies that are, are still, um, I would say appropriate, probably. What's going to be appropriate for that location, whether it's a dry dam, whether it's a Fox Culver type system, um, they'll have access to that as well. We're working on right now. It's such a large pile. We're, we're trying to either, we're trying to send it to the county so they can have it and share it to an engineer that's interested would be able to look at all those records to be able to, to go through all that, because obviously it'll be a huge help for them instead of, uh, reinventing something that's already been done.
This point I wanted to brought to our attention in that meeting was finding this barns with all that aid in there.
Yeah.
Save the city a couple hundred thousand dollars. This was estimated, a couple hundred thousand dollars for the engineering efforts of doing this project so far.
Yep. So, uh, once a firm's selected, they'll be able to go through that and then come up with a plan and obviously we'll be able to discuss and see and decide a long-term solution for Church Run. Uh, next, East Mount Vernon, what's my follow-up? Uh, we've talked, I've talked about that a few times. Uh, just giving council brief update on this. We had received one cost quote from GSI at Pittsburgh. They came up a few weeks ago, uh, looked the site over. Uh, they provided a quote of about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to stabilize that area. Uh, part of that, uh, cost would be our public works doing some work as well, um, which would include, um, some drains, taking care of some of the drains issue. We have a rental that's, uh, near Oak Street and the wall there where there's continuous to spring that runs through there. Um, it's going to be separated in winter time. Uh, we're trying to figure out a solution, obviously beforehand, but again, the engineer reiterated, if we start moving some of the earth, it's going to continue to come. Uh, so we have to be very careful. We can't just go in there and start digging and, and cleaning stuff up, uh, because of that possibly happening. Uh, we are waiting, uh, from a quote from Dana Fleming. That's our city engineer. Uh, they're going to have a quote as well. Uh, we have been working with the Crawford County Conservation District on funding, funding that's available out there. We're working through that application as well. Uh, I have been speaking with our insurance company. Uh, there is some coverage as well with that, so I'm hoping to be able to, to get enough that, that'll absorb all, if not all, most of, of the cost of this. Uh, certainly when we get close to that spot where we're going to be looking at prices more closely, we'll have a conversation about that as well, so. Uh, next, budget status. We started our 2023 budget talks. Started to leave for it that time of year again. Uh, met with the, the opportunity to plug the department heads last week. We went line and by line, um, uh, with each department, obviously with the finance supervisor as well. Uh, they have all, uh, put forth, uh, some ideas and some thoughts on the, on those line items with, with costs, predicted costs, uh, projected costs as well. We went over capital budget. Obviously, we're going to be continuing our budget talks here in the next few weeks. Uh, just so the public's aware, uh, we're going to have open meetings, six, six open meetings, public meetings where folks will be able to come in.
When's the first one?
First Monday, October.
Yes. So we have a few weeks out. Uh, again, I encourage public to attend these meetings, uh, so they can understand how we come up with some of these numbers, why we ask, why department heads ask for what they need, uh, certainly understand why we allocate what we do. So, again, I encourage public to, to attend those meetings. They'll be public and they'll be at city hall as they have been in the past. Uh, we'll certainly have it advertised, uh, on our website or call in to city hall. We'll let you know what time those are. Lastly, community calendar. Um, tap into TitusvillePA.com. They've got it right this time. Tap into TitusvillePA.com. Encourage everyone to go to that site. There's a lot of events going on. In fact, we have two special events tonight. That'll be on, uh, one with Chad has, one with, uh, the, uh, an event at the airport as well. Uh, so again, just, uh, ask everyone to, to go to that community calendar and check out, uh, the things that are going on in the city. And with that, council, that concludes my manager's report for this, this week.
I know this is early, but when we do the budget thing, budget, uh, this year, could we look again on the cost of, um, getting microphones for us so that we could do Facebook Live again, because we don't have the newspaper here anymore. For a while, we don't know how long that'll be, so people don't, people, if people, people have this available to them, but if they don't have cable, they don't.
Sure.
Yeah. Any other questions for Neil? I hear anybody entertain a motion to accept the manager's report?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
I'll second that.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Coppel.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Logst.
Yes.
Mr. Crowe.
Yes. And we have the minutes of boards and authorities from the housing authority. We got, uh, two or three different, uh, electronic things on that. Would anybody like to make a motion to accept those minutes?
Make a motion to accept.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Logst.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Coppel.
Yes.
Mr. Crowe.
Yes. Council committee updates. I know we, we're still working with, uh, the engineer to, to put out some bids for the airport, for the, uh, access room. And, uh, there's going to be a special event brought to our attention tonight, happening this weekend out there. And, uh, anybody else have anything on their committees that they're on?
I'm just, it's not really committed, but I'm just going to mention that the junior council person applications are in, and so we'll be talking to those, um, applicants and getting that well for the next meeting.
Yes.
And they'll be starting with us for this, uh, fall semester.
And if, and we kind of discussed this before the meeting, and if it's okay with Chad, he'll want to, I think he got into discussion, but we would just start whatever we think it's going to take, six or six fifteen, to give fifteen, twenty minutes to each one and, and do the interview process the night of our next meeting. We want to reach out to them and, uh, schedule that, and then we'll just, um, you know, if everything, all goes well, then we'll put them on next council meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. At this time, we'll open up for public participation pertaining to agenda items only right now. Five-minute time limit for individual speaker. For now, just say whether you're a taxpayer, resident, non-resident, what your connection is to the town. And we got old business tonight. We got, uh, resolution number six for special event approval process. Approved in the community garden agreement with United Way, introduction of council bill number four for alternate parking. We're going to have a little discussion on sidewalk, uh, of, should we have a sidewalk or, or, we have a sidewalk ordinance already, but maybe tweak it a little bit. New business will be a special, two special event applications, one for T-Vegas Fall Beer Fest and one for the OC Turbo Fest Jet Fun Rally in, uh, at the airport. We'll approve a minimum municipal obligation for fire and police, approve for operation agreement amendments for the CDVG program, introduction of council bill number five, repeal the dog kennel. And with that, would anybody like to give input on public coming the agenda items? All right. So we'll start with our old business tonight, approved resolution number six, special event approval process.
Yes, this is a resolution of the city council of the city of Titusville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, repealing resolution number three of 2020, designating city council to approve or disapprove special event and other permits for the use of the city's parks and recreational facilities.
Well, basically, we're going to go back to the way that it was. But did we add in there, did we add in there that they have a, um, appeal process?
Yes.
Okay. Is everybody happy with this? Any questions? Would somebody like to make a motion to approve this resolution number six?
I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
Well, second. All right, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Logst.
Yes.
Mr. Coppel.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Crowe.
Yes. And then tonight, we're going to.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yes, please.
Uh, we're still going to invite those votes, Stephen, if they, that's been approved to the council meeting, so we can hear what the event is.
And it'll be part of your, it'll be, it'll be incorporated as management.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you, sir, for that clarification. Um, you, so we're going to talk about the community garden agreement, United Way.
Yep. Uh, this agreement between the city and United Way is essentially for United Way's use and enjoyment of the city's, uh, sixty-by-sixty parcel where the David L. Weber Memorial Community Garden is located. Uh, the term of the agreement is for five years. Uh, this agreement also requires United Way to have insurance covering the United Way and the performance of the services for the garden. Uh, United Way, as you see, has agreed and signed the agreement. I'm asking council to approve this agreement on the condition that the city receives a copy of the insurance and it naming the city as an additional assurance.
Okay, I, I think we had twenty-some things and that was not one of them I printed out.
Did I not?
No, 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 I, it's probably here, but I didn't print it out. So my, my clarified questions to it is, I know we had this discussion.
Sure.
With Stacy was introducing it. Is there anything written in here about any sort of community hours? Where people can say, hey, on Saturday morning, I can go down there and sit and look at the flowers, whatever, you know, can, is there any time where it's open? Is that set up yet or is that something you're still working on?
It's not.
I'd go ahead.
Okay. It's not currently set up. I'm still working with them to try to find, I'm on the ground for that. Um, it's, so it's not in the agreement. The agreement here is more so just almost a release agreement. Not so much dictating what the garden can or can't do. Um, but it's, it's in the possible works. I want it to happen.
No, I, yeah. I just, I think it has, it really helps with the perception of what, you know, down the road, this is my, you know, what I would like to see. Down the road, I would like to see this be the starting of a community, the actual community garden. You know, this is the David Weber Memorial Community Garden, but to start a space somewhere where families that don't have place to put a garden can rent a space and do their community garden, so. Thank you. And so would someone like to make a motion to accept this agreement?
I'll make a motion to accept the agreement.
I'll second that.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Logst.
Owe staying.
Mr. Coppel.
Yes.
Mr. Crowe.
Um, I, before I do, if we abstain, do we not have to state a reason why you're abstaining?
Yeah, my sister was the one who leaked factors for this.
Okay. Just for the record, you want me, um, I, I will say yes. I figured that, but I just.
I support the program. I can't say that. It abstain.
Okay. Introduction of council bill number four, alternate parking. This has been some robust conversation.
Yes.
Where, where did we get with this last?
Yep, I'll go ahead and read it and you'll like it.
Will I?
Yeah, you will, whether you like it or not. No.
Uh, this is an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, amending certain sections of the codified ordinances of the city of Titusville, including section five-two-one-point-zero-two, emergency no parking authorized, publication of notice, providing, uh, separability.
Yes.
I've got to write this down. And an effective date. Essentially, this would, the mayor may order an emergency parking restrictions by issuing an emergency declaration due to anticipated flooding, excessive, excessive snowfall, natural or disaster or catastrophe. Prior to issuing such an emergency declaration, the mayor shall consult with the city manager for recommendations as to which, if any, streets, roads, avenues, or highways should be su- subject to emergency parking restrictions. The emergency declaration shall contain the names of those streets, roads, avenues, or highways, and the times and days during which parking shall be restricted due to the emergency. The city manager shall cause citizens and residents to be notified of the parking restrictions that are the subject of the mayor's emergency declaration. Uh, notify, notifications would include electronic notification, such as on the city's website, social media, shared with the local media, newspaper, signage. In addition to the notification set forth, the city manager shall cause the appropriate city office to place temporary signs along the streets, roads, avenues, or highways upon which parking is prohibited and shall provide notice of the dates and times of the parking restrictions. Upon the end of the declared emergency or removal of the street, removal of the street, road, or avenue, or highway from the parking, um, provision, prohibition list, the signs shall be removed by the appropriate city office. This shall not exceed five days unless extended by city council.
Okay.
So I tried to highlight.
So it's very targeted.
Tim, Tim is, Tim is, uh, kind of right before our last meeting. Sam and I had met with Chad and came up with something that, that had some flavor of this, but this way we don't have to purchase permanent signs. And there is no alternate parking unless we have a snow emergency or otherwise.
That's perfect.
See, and just to add, the signs go up, it's not going to be immediate. There's going to be a twenty-four hour, eight hour notice.
Right.
Those are going to.
And we spoke with Chris and Chris says that they have manpower where they can do this, put those signs up temporarily on the streets. They're going to be affected. It's not going to be a burden.
And then we can look at it in the spring and say, how did it go? Do you know, um, but this covers a lot of different things, like you said, if we had a flood or, yeah.
I like it. It's very targeted and.
Yes.
The purpose of the alternate parking in the first place is snow removal, targeting, so.
And he said we could.
If you're storm coming through, then we just.
Well, and if we have a couple of streets where leaves are really an issue, you can just.
We can enact it.
Once.
Yeah, we enact, enact it. So it gives us that freedom to be efficient in some cases.
Right.
And we did check with Tim because at, at one point we thought in our discussion last week that we were going to say the mayor or his designate could declare the emergency, but apparently the mayor has to do that.
That's right.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to, uh, accept or to, uh, establish this ordinance?
I make motion to accept it.
Okay.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Coppel.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Logst.
Yes.
Mr. Crowe.
Yes. So, next on here was, we had a lot of discussion with Gavin being here last time about sidewalk stuff like that. And I was just curious, and we can let this conversation go wherever it goes, but if we would consider some sort of a starting point of some, something to our sidewalk ordinance, because right now we don't enforce the sidewalk ordinance a lot at all. Something that would really help is when a home changes ownership, that at that time, our code enforcement person could look at the sidewalks. And I was thinking about this where we came in tonight and say, yeah, you need that much sidewalk proof. Well, they, if I was going to sell my house, I would have, I would want him to come up first. And if he said, you need so much in there, you could, I'm, I'm not the realtor, but I'm saying you could build it in the price. Say that money's going to go in escrow if you're selling in the winter time. This will cover the sidewalks, but that way, at least when houses are changing. They do this in a lot of other towns. When houses are changing ownership, then whatever sidewalks need repaired, at least were moved in, in a, because in the right direction. There's a lot of houses selling, so. I don't know if that's something that you guys would.
We had the conversation.
Yeah.
This is actually something that is done in most municipalities.
Yes.
We're already sending the inspector there to, to downspout.
Right.
So this isn't going to be any more, more involved than then signing up on sidewalk needs to be or doesn't.
I'm, I'm in support of this. The most part is just want to bring up something that's just come into mind, and maybe we can figure out a way to address it. What would happen if someone couldn't, you know, someone whose low income wants to sell their house and couldn't afford to repair the sidewalk to make the sale? Would this cause residents who's kind of left their houses fall and just repair and sold because they can't afford to replace the sidewalk or?
Well, let's say, let's say, let's say you were talking about, uh, a low to moderate income. Let's, let's just reach out there and say they had a hundred, a hundred feet of sidewalk total. And so I know from knowing mine, let's say that, that hundred feet of sidewalk, like, if the whole thing needed replaced or there wasn't anything there, it might be three or four thousand dollars. What I'm saying is, that's up, if we did an ordinance, that's up to the people buying and selling. They could put that in the price, you know?
So are you proposing on the seller, though? Does the seller have to come up with this three to four thousand dollars then order a list of house for sale?
Well, it's just that, no, we don't, we wouldn't do that, just that the sidewalks have to be repaired.
It would be the burden of the present owner to do that.
Yes.
But they can negotiate that in the sales contract to the buyer to.
So I guess.
The eye as the buyer could say, I'll take work.
I, I see what you're saying. It's like, is a part of, well, the, well, the inspection failed to sell the house or the sidewalks aren't addressed.
I mean, one way we could consider this is crafty ordinance is say that this could be done retroactively from the proceeds of the sale. Like, maybe the seller gets the money for selling his house and then he's required to turn the, this cost of the sidewalk money over to the buyer so you can repair it.
So, so, so it can be written up that it, it could be repaired, let's say it takes me. It could be repaired by me or the money, that's why I was suggesting to me, or the money can be held in escrow.
Right. So like, if, if, if the seller needs the sale of the house to fix the sidewalk because he doesn't have the money to upfront, perhaps we could say that, you know, the, the responsibility, as, as long as it's negotiated, the responsibility could fall on the buyer. If the money's, the seller would be allowed to give the buyer the money for the sale in order to fix the sidewalk, then the buyer would have shown up to like to.
Okay, so from your perspective, before we talk to Tim as an attorney, so the onus, however we need to write this, the onus is on the seller or it can be escrowed or negotiated into the sale of the home, but it, there must be, there must be documented thing that it will be taken care of prior to closing. Not that it has to be done.
I wouldn't say prior to closing because you might need the closing money to do the sidewalk.
I meant, I meant, it, it, it needs to be, um.
Agreed upon.
Agreed upon.
Prior to closing and then taken care of within X amount of time after closing. But some of it, I think we need to work in where the sale price of, of proceeds of the house could be used, even if asked to be given to the buyer and they do have free purchase of the house.
So maybe even, we could even put a time period in here, because I, I, I've seen it like that. You have, if it's escrow money, escrow lender, you have up to six months to fix it. That way, if it's winter time, they're not trying to.
Yeah, I think with our winters around here, probably six months would be a good time period to, to say, um, if that's the way they order. Obviously, the seller could still, if he had the money on hand, he could fix it with the sale, but if he needs to take the money out of the sale of the house.
Right.
Do you think there's enough, do you think there's enough in this discussion? You could talk to Tim and just have him, you know, give, draft something that we could release the discussion.
Send it out and look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be my only concern, is that.
I like it.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be my only concern, is that if the sale of properties, if someone had to preemptively fix their sidewalk, and they didn't have the money to do it, and weren't listed in the first place.
Perfect. Okay. All right, if everybody's okay, we'll move on to new business. We have a special event application, well, we can skip a, but we'll have a special. If you would like to present that to us, Chad?
I would.
Tell us about it.
No, I'm kidding. Uh, well, you know, I've been open a year, so, and, and what most breweries do, you know, they try to put on an event for, for the town, and, uh, we're in their town that ran to draw people in, so, you know, we kind of waited, you know, we didn't do one last year, so we wanted to put on a brew fest this year, and make it more of an Oktoberfest, it's kind of your, your last, you know, thing to really get outside and do before.
Sure.
You know, the cold weather and winter comes, so, you know, because everybody's going to be cooped up all week, all winter, so, you know, you know, we're hoping the, the event is successful, we like the, the whole that shoddy park, where we're not limited to just the, the street with a certain number of people, because, uh, you know, I would like to throw to as big as we can, we can get to draw as many people in the town as we can over the next, okay, handful of years, you know, my goal is a thousand people over the next, you know, build that up, you know, year two or three, and, uh, because these events, these are all people from Erie, Pittsburgh, Warren, Old City Franklin, Meathville, I mean, from everywhere, so we're going to get, uh, a whole abundance of people in the town, and hopefully they'll go down to, to all the other businesses beforehand or afterwards, afterwards, you know, we're going to host it two to six, so, if they get here early, want to go down to Drake while they can, and then after six, and if they want to go down to Drake while with, and have a little bit more fun, they can.
The event is two to six?
Two to six.
Six to cut off, because that's just what you're trying to.
Uh, I would, I really want, I was thought about really doing it four to eight, you know, because I kind of wanted it so, you know, especially on Saturday, they could come downtown, come to the Fat Jazz, or Iron Words, or the Dime, or Bunions, or somewhere, but I, I was driving down the streets, you know, right at dark.
Yes.
And this, and that part's kind of dark.
Yeah.
I thought it was going to be lighter with the, with the streetlights, so, I didn't want to have to end up being cleaning up, taking tents down and everything at, you know, night and night, and not be able to see anything, so I'd rather do it from two to six, where we have a couple of, you know, an hour of daylight to make sure the parks clean, and, uh.
And you don't need any, you don't need any, um, streets closed, right?
No streets need to be closed, uh, I, we have told people that we have city parking across the street in the parking lot over there.
Yep.
I'm, I'm sure some of the vendors that piped all their vehicles over there, but we have access to, you know, they have access to park on the street on load, then, then either keep their vehicle there if they like, or put it over in the city parking lot, so, you know, if we host it there, they, they have, everybody has so much more options.
Okay.
The park, and, and we're putting that out there, where it's going to be out there where the city, uh, park wants to be available for parking, and, and, uh.
We have.
We're just looking forward to the event, you know, you know, been trying to get the word out, uh, I've been posting on social media, so if anybody would like to keep sharing it, to get it going, would be great.
How many are you expecting of the first one?
Uh, my goal is three hundred people, that'd be, that'd be a great start.
Right.
But if we get more, I'm going to have glassware for, for more, so, I'm ordering, I have a certain amount, if I hit, if I hit the amount, it would, it would be good for everybody.
And there's a cost, what's the cost to get in?
Uh, it's forty dollars a ticket.
Okay.
Uh, right now, we have, uh, ten breweries coming, I'm working on a couple, uh, distilleries that, and I think they'll bring down vodka, and they'll be able to sell it there too, you know, you can buy bottles, take home with you, kind of like a wine lock, but.
Yeah.
Uh, everything will be roped off, uh, with caution tape all, all the way around the park. Uh, right now, I have, like, six volunteers, I may end up having about twelve volunteers that, for, for security reasons, everybody's going to have wristbands, we're going to have, uh, the ones who are participating, we're going to have a different colored wristband, designated drivers, they'll have a different colored wristbands, so they will never, they won't be served at all. Uh, we are going to have food, you know, just a small food tent down there for, for everybody to eat, and, uh.
Porta potties?
Porta potties will be there also, so, and we're going to take care of all the cleanup, everything will be down and gone by Sunday morning, for anybody in the church to go to their park, so.
All right, I, I think it's a great event, I don't want to sound like a downer, but when we, when we wrote the, um, the resolution to allow alcohol in the park, is it just beer and wine?
Nope.
Or was it everything?
No, it had, because they, because if I, if I'm correct, because they have, they have all that stuff at the wine festival, it, it, it has, because they have to get the right permitting, permits from.
I was just making sure, I couldn't remember how we wrote it.
Yeah.
Everybody that comes, they'll have a.
It was held up there.
Netsco permit, I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, everybody's coming, will have their own Netsco permit, uh, and that's issued by the PLCB.
Right, I just want to make sure that we wrote it correctly.
They ordered that.
When we, right, when we opened that up to the parks, I just wanted to make sure we did.
Email us, email us if it's not.
Yeah, and those, those citizens haven't confirmed yet, either.
Yes.
No, that's fine, I, I totally support this, I just want to make sure that we wrote it correctly to.
Okay.
Allow additional things.
Okay.
Yeah, I like the thought of you doing it, and then, like, this is not an oil fest, because there's so much going on at a moral fest, so you have other things to go to having this kind of units on, every time.
And I am going to have hornhole boards there, too. I want to have something, hornhole boards, I want to have something that, you know, say, I, I'm just going to go Sam, for instance, you know, Sam wants to come and hit up all the breweries, and, and we know that, you know, he's a protective person that likes to have fun, you know, and not know his limit, oh, he can start putting his little games out. I'm just, it's just, I'm just, but if you have games out, they're going to stop, we're going to play a game for a while, and, and it's going to be, we want to create a, a fun atmosphere, is what we want to do, you know, so, we don't want to just, everybody just come and drink beer, we want them to have fun, so.
Perfect. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Second.
All right, I have to call her up, and I guess you can go, get Steve on this one. Okay.
Mr. Boglum.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Kober.
I abstain.
Yeah, I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Crouch.
Yes. Next one, Neil, I guess you'll be presenting is the special event for McInnes Fall, OZI Turbo Fest.
Yes, this is the Oil Big Flyers RC Club, the Fall Oil Brew Turbo Fest Jet Fun Fly will be on September twenty-third, twenty-fourth, they'd like to set up on the twenty-second in the afternoon, and cleanup will be on the twenty-fifth, it must be Monday morning, uh, so we obviously have the Tennesseau Airport, from one of them, I think they've been there twenty years.
They've been going probably for ten, fifteen years.
Uh, there's going to be some RVs and trailers out there as well, uh, they have supplied their certificate of liability insurance, adding the city as additional insured, um, they're not asking for anything else, but use, other than just to use the airport for the holidays.
And just for logistics, every person that participates in that particular one, on top of that, insurance that they have, every particular, every person has to pay a fee, I think it's seventy-five, and they belong to a club, which they have their own personal liability on top of that, each one has a million dollars on top of that.
Is that where they have their, their model airplanes?
Yes, but these are, these are jets.
Oh, jets.
If you drive by there, where your windows down, you think you're going by O'Hare, it's that, it's that.
Isn't this just the club, or is it open to the public?
No, this is, this is open to the public.
I just have, I wondered, because when they put on here, they said there'd be about a minimum of ten, maximum of twenty.
No, they're talking about.
So I wasn't sure if it was, well, I wasn't sure if it was just the club doing this, or if it was actually to be open to the public.
The only thing they, only thing that they forget on their flyers sometimes, I always keep telling them to, to remind people to bring lawn chairs, because a lot of times older people or handicapped people come out to want to see it, and there's no place for it to sit down, so. And they have it all, by the way, they, I've been there since I came back in eighteen, and they always have everything marked off and, and compared, so that people don't go near it.
Mm-hmm.
Do I hear a motion to accept this, or?
I'll make a motion that we approve the special event.
Okay, no second, call her up, please.
Mr. Boglum.
Yes.
Mr. Boglum.
Yes.
Mr. Kober.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Crouch.
Yes, and now, our next thing on the agenda is approval of minimum municipal obligation for fire police.
Yes, council, briefly, this is for the police pension plan and the fireman's pension plan for the twenty-twenty-three minimum municipal obligation, also included in your package is twenty-twenty-two as well, so you can kind of see the comparison, obviously this is dictated by the market, uh, for the police pension plan, it was for twenty-twenty-three, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two, you see, back in twenty-twenty-two, it was four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three sixty-three, so just slightly up, uh, for the fire department, for twenty-twenty-three, two hundred and three thousand, four hundred eighty-nine, in twenty-twenty-two, it was two hundred and eight, two thirty-four, so obviously a little bit lower, again, just looking for council's approval of that municipal obligation for voting.
Do I hear a motion to accept this, municipal obligation?
I'll make a motion that we accept the, the MLO.
Okay. There is, second.
Second.
Call her up, please.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Boglum.
Yes.
Mr. Kober.
Yes.
Mr. Crouch.
Yes. Approval of Cooperation Agreement Amendments for the CDVG Program Administration.
Yes, council, a few things on this, so, the amendments are to the Cooperation Agreement, which include upping the administration fees to twelve percent, which was six percent before, also, this, these amendments follow the guidance outlined by the, by DCD during the CDVG Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity Program Performance Review, uh, council would have received that Cooperation Agreement, you'd see through, there was a, a few things in there, uh, that needed amended, I can highlight some of it, if council would like, uh, basically, it's designated fair housing officer through the public, publication of fair housing, um, and things like that. Council would like me to go through all the highlights of that, or you had a chance to?
We kind of talked about this already, all right? Abort, is this for the future, because weren't we already up to twelve percent?
This is the official.
This is the contract.
Official.
We voted to do that.
You voted, but this is.
Contract.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to accept this.
Second.
All right, call her up, please.
Mr. Kober.
No.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Boglum.
Yes.
Mr. Crouch.
Yes. Okay, now, is the introduction of Council Bill Number Five, which will repeal our current dog kennel.
Yeah, as council recalls, we had a conversation briefly, we had a resident call in, that's a concern, finding a stray dog in town, called the police department, was under, the resident was under the understanding that we had a dog kennel, was per the ordinance, um, and just wasn't sure of the process now, uh, so this is, in order to repeal several sections pertaining to the impounding of certain dogs, uh, city has not had for several years an active dog pound, uh, each year, the dog pound became in despair and actually wouldn't pass inspection each year, uh, the city would have to be inspected and purchase an annual dog pound license, after having a long discussion with the police chief, we both believe it doesn't make sense financially to go back to the city picking up dogs and having a dog pound down their public works, obviously the responsibility to take care of it, um, now certainly, the PD encourages everyone, if you encounter a dangerous dog, they'll handle those calls, the dog's very aggressive, uh, as they do in the past, they'll handle those dogs and do what they need to do, um, now, if it's a stray, we have added contact information to our city website, making it easy for someone who encounters a stray dog to call, uh, and I've explained, it's really simply go to the city homepage, click Residence link, Community Information, you scroll down, and you'll see a, I'll pick, I'll find a stray dog, and there's a number underneath it, goes to Crawford County, San Fuller, who's the Crawford County Humane Dog Works, um, and you contact them if you find a stray, obviously, most of us know, if you look on Facebook, if somebody finds a dog, they put it on there, it seems like pretty quickly, people are quick to get on there and say, oh, that's my neighbor's dog, or that's mine, certainly, we're encouraging those folks to continue to do that, as that's very, uh, seems to work probably the best out of any, again, I do want to reiterate, if there's a dangerous dog, if you have any encounter, our police department will take care of it.
Okay, of course. So, basically, this is just.
This is.
Making it what we had already, I mean, same, making it, uh, show what we did already, because this, the last time we had a kennel was probably, what, fifteen or sixteen?
Yes.
Long before us.
Yeah.
Okay. Would someone like to entertain a motion to accept this bill number five?
I'll make a motion to accept Council Bill Number Five.
I'll second that.
Call her up, please.
Mr. Boglum.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Kober.
Yes.
Mr. Crouch.
Yes, well, we made it through an agenda in four minutes, so, it was a pretty full agenda. At this time, we're going to open up the public input, five minute time left per speaker, would anybody like to make a comment? Nice to have Zach here, he's our CDVG administrator in the county, and, uh, sure glad to see that vote. So, tonight, uh, we'll have our comments by mayor and council, and we'll start with Chad.
I'm just happy with the way things are going and going forward, uh, is there any updates on the park?
Yes, actually, there is, uh, today, we heard, we hadn't heard anything in a few weeks, uh, Tara Works is doing the project, has been waiting for some, some of the equipment, some of the things they need over there, uh, water lines, just different things, uh, county planning, reach out to them, and they're actually planning, they'll start Monday.
Okay.
So, uh, Pacheco had approved some of the, some of the work orders and some things that they were going to be getting, but again, it was just kind of waiting on pricing for some of the equipment, some of the material that they need over there, uh, you know, we've been talking about it for a few weeks, our hope was that they were going to start beginning September, here we are on the twentieth, but next Monday is hopeful that they'll start to do it.
That's it?
Sam?
Um, first thing is, um, it's one of the concerns of the, almost of the, the shitty apartment, uh, at one point, there was, I think, people staying there, uh, we made reinsurance to the community that Diamond Street Park was not going to be taken over from the drunk aspect hanging down, coming down to bars.
Vaguants.
But we're showing, we're having a hard time, demonstrating we're having a hard time, police, which I can partner right now as it is, we need to step this up, find out
We need to step this up, find out what's going on, are these people aware of the social services that are available, and point them in the right direction, I'm not being cold hearted, but at the end of the day, I've talked to people and there are some concerns, and people aren't feeling so threatened, I believe the police were called, an implication that occurred out there the other day as well. We need to step up on this and this needs to be addressed more with.
Good.
The second thing is something I'm really passionate about, and that's turning over our garbage collection back to the city, that legacy is form of the days, we actually start that, again, this two-year contract, it's going to get fairly enough time to get something inclusive, we have to, with the price of sixty-seven thousand dollars monthly, double paying for the garbage pickup, there's no way the municipality can do that for that money or cheap.
I do have an individual that will come and speak with us and Neil, give us a better pricing, you know, better idea of the pricing of the cost for us to do.
If we did ourselves, okay.
Yes.
How, how, what do you guys think of? If you have all the time, when, when you're done, what do you think of us putting together an exploratory committee after we've done the budget? I mean, that way, that way we're not trying to cram that in, so maybe December or something, when we get that, when we're done with our budget meetings, then, then Sam can help us lead it up, since he's got quite a bit of experience with it, Chad, whoever this person is, come in and talk to us.
If you want to share contact, we can talk.
Okay.
Yeah.
Background's going on, it's a combination, man, in two years, not so far, like, but it's really nice.
No, it's not.
We have a wide infrastructure.
Yeah, I've already, he's already giving me prices on, on vehicle trucks, different styles of trucks that we could use.
Okay.
Uh, everything, and you know, the price per ton, with, and all that, and recycling, and, I mean, he knows the business.
Yes.
And he doesn't want to do it, but he's more than willing to give us all the numbers, so we have a better roundabout number of what, what's going to cost.
Well, and just, and just sidebar conversations with Sam and myself, I can't remember who else was involved in it, but, um, the employees that it would take to do the garbage would not be doing that eight hours a day, five days a week, so they would be available to help the city with other things as well, so, did that, that's acceptable?
The price of the garbage pickup will be paid to these employees for those extra two to three days.
Right.
To be up in the parks or whatever tasks we need done.
Okay, anything else?
That was it.
All right, Jason?
Okay, yeah, so my comments are kind of going to be some big ones tonight, which is that, uh, they relate to, uh, the moral obligation that I've kind of been feeling lately about, thinking about it being time for me to possibly step down here soon from my position on council as a result of my residency. So I think everyone up here is really well aware that in order to hold these offices, um, one of the requirements is that you have to reside within the geographical city limits of Titusville. And that dynamic has started to change for me recently, uh, in the spring, last spring, actually, I had bought a house out in Enterprise, uh, not necessarily intending to move into it right away, but just because it happened to be the house that my parents had built when I was a child, it was my childhood home, so I wanted to purchase that house and bring it back into the family. For the last, you know, several months, I've been kind of using it as a weekend home, going out there on occasion, but I've really been residing over here in my apartment on Main Street. Uh, about a month ago, my wife's brother moved up from Florida, and he was needing a place to stay to kind of get on the speed and get a job here, and we've kind of let him have the apartment now, and it's seeming now to be like my residency has really shifted from being an in-town resident to, to no longer, um, really residing in Titusville. So I think, um, the plan is then maybe we could, what do I want to do, submit like a thirty-day notice to give time to find our placement, is it, what are your guys' thoughts to do? I can resign now, I can, um, stay on for thirty days, we'll look for somebody.
Let's say, let's say, um, I guess, uh, my thoughts would be, if you, you know, made it, if you made it effective at the end of, uh, you know, like October fifth, then you could still be here for the meeting on the fourth, and that would give us time to advertise and start interviewing people, and then by our next meeting, they would, that way they were here for budget and all that stuff, so.
I, I guess my only question, um, is, that is just semantics, and do you change your residency at the post office?
No, I'm still paying my income taxes, still here, my address is here, my driver's license is here, so, I mean, it's just a matter of, I, I had this conversation with Slister when I first bought the house, and he said that there's a bunch of factors to go into it, the, the most driving factor is where are you staying out most nights per week?
Sure.
So, up until recently, it's been in county, but with my brother-in-law coming and kind of giving the apartment over to him,
Okay.
um, that's, that's changed, but like I said, my residency, or sorry, my address and all that is still listed here.
Well, I mean, it's been kind of enjoyable for the last nine months, having a same council, been good.
Yeah.
And at the same time, I understand, I understand family obligations, and we're, I'm a hundred percent behind you, even though I hate to see you go, um, we thank you for giving us a little bit of time to.
And I, and I want to be clear too, I actually don't really have a desire to resign, but I just don't feel comfortable pretending to, to be resident, I'm not really a resident.
And I.
It's a moral obligation for me to, uh, it's that desire to actually do it.
I for one, hate to see you go, but I mean, when that resignation comes, I, we will accept it, have it accepted.
Okay, so I guess then, uh, it, it sounds like over the end, towards possibly having me to have my resignation be effective on the fifth, so I'm here for the next meeting, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, what are we saying, that you have tended your resignation and your, on the date, it's going to be the fifth.
Effective.
Right.
So that will allow us to politicize and start taking applications, because he has submitted one, has submitted a resignation.
Okay, and, and you guys can start putting it together, put it out?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's kind of a, you know, I guess double-edged sword, because it's good for your family to be where they want to be, and out in the country, fresh air and all that, so.
Yeah, I mean, it was definitely a sentimental thing to be able to buy the house that my, that my dad built, so, it was, it was an opportunity I couldn't resist, I mean, it.
Sure. Okay.
Just kind of replace with this, unfortunately.
Is it, that all?
That's all.
Okay, so, go ahead, Debbie.
I don't have anything else to submit.
Okay, I would just like to say on a community note, that I think with Sarah and I had an opportunity to, uh, go to the Farm to Fork event last Saturday evening. And what I find really interesting is, other than when we didn't have very COVID, I've been to everyone since I've been back here, and every year is a whole different crowd, and there was a lot of people that aren't, that weren't from town here, that must have heard about it online, we had a couple ladies that were up there camping from Pittsburgh that just looked for something to do, they didn't even know what the event was, but they came, they had blast. And so I encourage people, if you get an opportunity next year to go to, because it's just, it basically takes all the local farmers and, and that are out, Big G Tire right now, we hope to have them in town sometime, and, uh, and they all, you know, specialize in whatever they do, we had rabbit stew and walleye and homegrown mushrooms and all kinds of stuff, but it was a good time. Hope everybody has a good rest of September, our next meeting is October fourth. Thanks to our city workers for all that they're going to put this budget together, and I would like to say to all the people out there, there's chatter out there on social media and emails and everything else going around, that we have great opportunities, six, right, budget work sessions coming up, six, and they're all open to the public. So if there's something you don't understand, or questions you have, or come and maybe you can get educated, and maybe we can get educated with them. Please.
Um, homecoming will also be before, or.
Okay.
So I know businesses are encouraged to decorate their windows to become part of it, so it becomes a community event, and so it is September thirtieth, so, yes, so all next week, we'll see kids. Um, celebrations around the world.
There'll be a parade as well.
There'll be a parade, uh, with all the, the class floats and all of that.
I believe it's Hall of Fame and Duxton League End also.
Is that, the parade's on Friday?
Yeah.
Parade's on Friday before the game, yeah.
Okay.
We have a nice big banner from the city hall, we'll put it up.
Cool. We have a float, city hall, not yet. Okay. With that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All right, call a roll, we are, I mean, our videographer was leaving at eight o'clock anyway, so we're, but we're doing it.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lockton?
Yes.
Mr. Cogel?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes. Thank you to everyone that attended.